Today, everyone, remember, 2022 Regular Meeting of the Deep River Board of Finance. First item on our agenda would be the approval of the minutes. There are three minutes that we have to approve. October 25th, our regular meeting, and two special meetings, November 9th and November 15th. And just to let people know or remind people, we had two executive sessions. So we had two special meetings, probably, which we went into executive session to interview potential candidates to fill our positions, just for information. Does anyone wish to make a motion to accept the minutes?
I'm of the type.
Hello? Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
I agree.
Thank you. Do I have comments from citizens, observations from citizens?
Hi, I'm Kathy Mitchell. I do have a question ahead of time to understand the agenda before we get to items seven. It says plural vacancies. Are we looking to fill more than one?
Yes, as part of, yes. And I wish to do this in a logical sequence here. But as we were interviewing candidates, the first meeting, Mr. Bill Shifer announced that he was going to submit his resignation. And he actually officially did that two days later. And so, yes, there's two positions that are currently.
Okay. And what will be your process now to fill those two positions?
A process now? It's the now part that throws me off. We have interviewed, we identified five candidates, four wish to proceed. We had interviewed four candidates. Of those four, we will somewhat on this board, hopefully, will nominate one or two people this evening to fill those positions.
And is the plan to replace them, do any party replacements, the Democrat with the Democrat, the Republican with the Republican?
Probably not. Probably not. The town clerk sees both of those positions as having a party affiliation due to whoever was the person that was elected. Russ Marth was a Democrat, so she will see the person who replaced him as a Democrat, and Bill is a Republican, will see who is replacement is filling a Republican seat.
But they will be, the Democrat will fill the Democrat's seat. This could just be verbiage, I'm not correcting. Will there be a person, be a Democrat who fills the Democrat's seat? And will a person who fills the Republican seat be a Republican? Or are you saying that they will be of any party affiliation, that they will be viewed as a priority?
Collateral. There will be any party affiliation to be viewed by the town clerk.
And is your plan on, when you get to section 7A, is it to appoint, discuss, and vote tonight?
Yes.
All right. Well, I think it's my understanding that we need to call a special meeting to do that.
Why?
State statutes say so.
State statutes say you have to have a special meeting to abort the placement for board finance?
Yep. Section 7-343, filling vacancies for board of finance. Chairman, you'll call a special meeting of the board for the purpose, by a majority vote, appointing a successor.
So it cannot be done at a regular board meeting?
That's what it says.
And that meeting has to be noticed?
Yes. All right. So it's all meetings are public, so.
This is a public meeting?
Yeah.
It's only agenda?
Well, yeah, but it's also your regular meeting, because it's on your, it's on your list of regular meetings. And it says on the agenda that this is your regular meeting.
All right. Now, I have, does anyone on the board of finance wish to comment?
It's just for you, new news to me. I wasn't aware that long.
Just news to me, too. I mean, I got.
The only thing I knew about the statutes was that the state statutes said we have to maintain minority representation on the board. But I didn't.
That's a different statute.
I didn't read anything about having to have a special session rather than a regular meeting.
7-343.
7-343?
Can I ask one question regarding minority representation? You know, the makeup right now is four Democrats and two Republicans. When you, does that mean it doesn't necessarily have to be a Republican? It could be an unaffiliated voter that would take Bill's place, let's say, and so that would be minority representation?
I would vote, I would nod yes to that logic. Until the next election, where voters will make that decision.
Yeah, next election, there'll be four up. There'll be four seats up.
Four seats up.
Of the six.
Two fillers.
So that would actually be, that would actually be Bill's seat, right? He would come.
Yeah, we will put somebody with this.
Year. Bill's seat, my seat, Buzz's seat.
And mine.
Yeah. So there's four, four of six seats will be up next, next go on.
All right. Well, then, I guess we will not have item seven. Rather disruptive. Did not seem particularly productive, but we will, we will defer to Greg's reading.
Could you reread that for me again, please?
Sure. Connecticut state statute, section 7-343, filling of vacancies for board of finance. Special meeting of the board of, of the board called by the chairman for that purpose by a majority vote, appointing a successor. I didn't put in all the bits and pieces, but that's basically what it said.
We have it here in the statute book, so if you want to refer to it.
I have component. I'll check it.
Yeah.
Do you know?
Well, we've had it happen in the past. I mean, I was chairman for 12 years on the board of finance. We have many fill-ins, you know.
All right. Is that me, Jackie, from the table?
Huh?
We do, you were the special member?
Yeah. You did, actually.
Yes.
I think so.
All right. So we share one?
Um, no. I don't know. I was here when you.
So, question?
Yes.
So what you're saying is there has to be a special call meeting?
For that purpose.
For that purpose only? And then bring those names to here?
Our board with what the board calls?
People they interviewed, who they wanted to move forward to. Which Bill has put in his resignation, and tonight is his last, which is just the way he chose to move forward. It's all for, it brings about a sadness on my part. I think Bill made a major contribution to the board, but, which means that we still have enough to vote.
All forms.
All forms.
Yeah. All right. Well, if the chairman shows up.
Want to take back your resignation? I've been trying to.
No, I can't.
All right. So the names that you would move forward tonight would be whole until your special meeting?
That is correct.
Well, this doesn't say when you have to have a special meeting. It just says at a special meeting.
So that was my question, my chairman. This is what we're going to do a special meeting, but I'm sure it has to be now.
You can't, you cannot constitute a, a meeting as a special meeting.
That is what Greg was saying here.
So you have to announce it and then call it?
Yes. Okay. We shall, we shall abide by the laws of our nation. Thank you, citizens. That answers that question. I had been on the agenda, but we shall not, shall abide by the law. But that could probably tie in with this stuff and a special meeting.
Yes. Possibly could be.
My resistance is that could be a, um, we. But I thought I had to go over with you guys first before we talk to Tommy. Do you want to sit here? I can work. And he's heard you, other things we talked about. Two resolutions you're going to bring up in a moment may need a special meeting. All true. Good. All right. Well, thank you, citizens. Just hope you have informed citizens. Tommy, that would bring you up as treasurer.
Okay. I think Kathy actually sent those to you, the, today or yesterday? If not, then, you know, I gave everyone a hard copy. So, yeah, let's just look at the general fund account, account balances. We're at $7,759,501. If we have to, I take away, actually, the capital improvements borrow, you know, those monies are in an account, so that was from the loan that was, that was booked. And right now, we have $1,250,074. So if you take that away from that, that total, general fund balance total, it brings us more in line with actually what our balance is there, which would be $6,509,426. That would be actually less than $735,892 last month. And if we compare that to last year, we're up $980,926. And just some information on the capital improvements borrow. Again, that was, that's with, with Dime Bank at $1,425,000. That actually closed on June 8th, 2022. And if we're going from month to month, the only, right now, we're at, again, the $1,250,074. It's only changed from last month, $973.69. There's been no disbursements from that in the last month. A major dispersment was made on 8/18/2022. And again, that was for that $150,000 for the progress payment on the pumper contract. So that's been really the only major dispersment since that loan, loan was booked. Regarding wire transfers for the last, last month, from 10/24 to 11/21, I made two wire transfers, one on 11/8 for $300,000, one on 11/16 for $500,000. So there were the total of $800,000 for those two wired wires. And it was taken from our Liberty Bank money market account and put into our Citizens Bank General Fund for dispersments or payables that we would have to cover. If we look at the total balances at the bottom of this report, right now, we're at $9,946,490. To make it more realistic, we take away the capital improvements borrow and the, also the ARP funds, the American Rescue Plan Act funds. Put us more in line of what realistically what we have as far as a balance. So that would be $7,380,822. If we compare that to last month, we're more or less $757,655. If we compare it to a year ago, we're up the $595,123. Regarding the American Rescue Plan account, we received the three, or actually, I thought there were going to be two disbursements. We've received three disbursements, and this is all the money that we'll be getting. And right now, there's $1,315,593 in that account. $685.25 is actually interest. That's accrued since we received those monies last month. There was $77.04 in interest. So we received on July 14th, $657,454. On 8/16, we received $225,953. And then on 10/4, we received $431,533. So the total that we received was $1,314,90844.
Tom, did you say there was disbursements out of the American Rescue? Did you say three disbursements out of what fund?
David.
Three ins.
Three ins.
Three ins, not three outs.
Right.
Okay. Gotcha.
The education equalization grant monies, the ECS monies, this fiscal year, received our first payment on October 31st for $417,864. That's one quarter of what we will receive, which is $1,671,457. The next disbursement will be on January 31st for the same amount as this, this amount, the $417,864. So again, that will be another quarter. And then in April, April 30th, we'll receive $835,729, which will make up that $1,671,457. The, our next bond issue payment, that's from the USDA Department of Agriculture. That's for the Kirtland River Street sewer project. Again, that was originally for $2,910,000 at 2.625% interest rate. It's for 40 years. It goes from 2016 to 2055. There's an annual payment due of $118,379, and that payment is due on December 17th. That will be our seventh payment. And once that payment is made, it will reduce the principal by $269,073. And that, it's that payment of $118,379, the annual payment, that's right now made, made up of principal of $49,054.68 and interest of $69,324.32. So our balance will be $2,640,926.64 after this seventh payment is made on, on December 17th.
Two in 2055. Do you think you're, I'm assuming you'll still be.
Yeah.
Seems, I tell you, let's all get together.
I don't like, I don't like it here.
So even Bill will come back.
Yeah, right. I can bring my bones back.
And there's been no fluctuation in interest rates. They're the same as they were last month.
Are there the 1%, I see you're getting on your sweep account?
Yeah, actually, yeah, that's been doing pretty, pretty well. Liberty's been very good.
When's the last time, I mean, the interest rates have gone up? Have they?
Yeah, they just changed that just a couple, couple months, months ago. And they're very good about adjusting rates.
Okay. We appreciate that. All right. We'll see that one, we'll get the budget. Thank you. All right. Regentations of selectmen. This is you.
Can everyone get both copies of the Flumner's resignation?
Yes.
Thank you.
Jack, do you have one?
Thank you.
Do you have one?
Thank you.
These are just drafts, so.
Here, let me draw some.
Can I have? Thanks. Thank you.
All right. We'll go with the smaller one. Bud and I had talked yesterday about this. They wanted to, Angus wanted to try to move it forward tonight, but there's some things I wasn't comfortable with, and Bud wasn't comfortable with. So the first one, we received $104,000, in line to receive $104,000 grant from the state for the sustainability. Our question is, do we have to put the money up, do we have to pay the money first and then get reimbursed? Or are they going to give it to us? And that's what we're concerned about. We didn't have enough documentation to move it forward tonight. So this is what that first one is about the sustainability. It's basically for the food scraps.
Wait, you tell them, if they're, this is where they're going to give, I thought I'm a football fan. We will receive money, right? And the question I have, will we receive it in whole? Or will they reimburse us as we incur the cost? Many of these grants, most of these grants are reimbursed ones. And that's okay. I just think we ought to know that. We do not want these funds intermingled with the town funds. So we'll have to set up a separate fund. But I have no idea. Is money going in? I do not know how cash flows. It just seems like something we should know before we pass it on to the towns, my question.
So when Angus gets back from his trip, he should have more information. And I believe that we're going to try to have a, a special meeting, because if we pass it, then it's a little town vote. So I know we have to have a town meeting for some appointments on some of the boards and commissions. So we're going to try to loop them all together. But I wasn't ready to move it forward tonight, so.
If that money goes into like a separate account, like a holding account or whatever, can we get interest on that? Or is that, that's probably something we have to check to.
What goes to the base question? Are we getting, are we getting money? Are we spending money?
We don't know if we're just going to get a check for $104,000 better fund.
Right.
And we use it as we go along?
So.
Or do we have to pay for it, and then we're going to get reimbursed? That's where I'm concerned, and I don't have enough information on it.
Okay.
All right. Now, just basically for information. The next one, I know has been talked about at some previous meetings, about establishing another capital in a non-occurring capital fund, because we, we put money aside for capital improvements, and we don't get them done in prior, in the proper year. And by rights, we're supposed to get authorization again. This would alleviate that problem. We get authorization the first time, we shouldn't have to go back a second or third time to get authorization. So this is going to be another fund. And Bud, you can check in and help me if I'm floundering.
We've been saying the same thing for four months. So you've done a fine job. We've gotten closer with the resolution, but do the, the first two items, items one and two, cover exactly what Duane is saying. It is when we get to three. Upon the reputation of board of finance, us, and approval of a town meeting, there shall be paid into such fund. I want a list of the capital that's going into this fund and the dollars that are going to be used to fund it. And I haven't, I haven't gotten that number, and I may be contributing to it. Angus and I disagree on how he wants to proceed. He wants to proceed, this could come out more derogatory than I want to. Peace, okay? I think that's a negative word. It's not meant to be. He wants to put certain items in there. And we can work on that, except why? If we're going to do it, do it. So anyhow, that's, we have to deal with that. What projects are going in? How are we funding? I apologize once again, I just don't know how this is working.
So again, that would be a separate account for capital non-recurring.
Yes.
We have, we still have that, that capital non-recurring fund that has $26,000. So that would be separate from that.
That one will shoot the last.
Yeah.
Yes. That's what it is.
There used to be a water.
We pull money out of it large, it's one of those words that everyone disagrees on. There was $300,000 there. We pulled, you could give it back, $300,000 less, whatever Tom is saying is left. We pulled into the general fund in anticipation of paying for some of the fire trucks. It's sitting now in the general fund. What the orders want to do, what the orders want to do is set up another account so that all capital goes in there, it does not have a beginning or an end to it. The way we have been using it is up there, if we give capital, we give back to the general fund to pay for it. They want this thing to stand alone.
Okay.
And they say that is the way that many of the towns do it, and why shouldn't we be like other towns? It's just confusing. The explanation given to me was that all capital, when we go to the town and we have a capital account, all capital will go into this account. All right. It'll be somewhat indifferent to the town, but all capital going, and all approvals will live on in this capital account. All right. And I follow that. It's just how we get money up and back, I'm uncomfortable with still. And if you notice, some of the items in here, there's a limitation on how many mills can go in this account. No one ever told me about these kinds of things. So I apologize. I, once again, I apologize, and you just need more information to be able to answer your questions and make a recommendation to you. So I apologize. So, well, making progress, I guess. Yes.
So when Angus gets back again, he'll have more information on this.
We should put it there. What did you call it at the end of the story? Eppeloff? Angus would like to go to a town meeting at the, towards the end of December, and he would like these items on that agenda. If that is true, and I can get comfortable enough to look you in the eye and say the following, it's possible we may need to call a special meeting, either here or on Zoom, to get the board to approve these and move them to town.
Can we do the special meeting at the same time as we appoint new members?
That is Duane's theory, so yeah. Yes.
Just want to make sure it meets the state statute, that we can have a special meeting with other agenda items on it. Okay.
As soon as you can. Special is special.
Kill two birds with one stone, hopefully. Maybe three birds.
I appreciate the reference. It's the killing part that I'm gonna. Sorry. That's quite all right. If you have, do you have any other additional recommendations or comments?
That's all I have.
To ask?
Sure.
All right. Folks, shall we turn to the monthly reports? Everyone receives monthly reports. Everybody receive monthly reports they could read? Are we making great progress? Good. All right. Well, let's start, unless anyone else, I'm going to start with the expenditures. I have, there's a couple of things here that are worthy of a pause, but my usual, I'm going to pause more often than I think may be necessary. We are in the November 5th month in our fiscal year, which would add a 12, which would suggest what, about 42? If we spend everything on a straight line basis, that would suggest we spent about 42% of all of our expenditures and have 58 left. It is, it's a vague reference, but at least gives me, when you look at these percentages, it will at least give us some sense of where to stop, if I thought. All right. Can I run the expenditures? So we end up, the selectmen budget has 63 or 64% left, so I'm going to suggest, there's not a whole lot to look at there. And again, I promised you I'd stop more often. There's a curiosity what, what engineering services we spent, we have about 42% left, suggesting it's not meeting my, my concept of straight line, but we will get those information. The other one I wish to draw to your conversational attention is the last item in selectmen. If you remember, at the time we went to the town asking for authority for this budget, we did not yet have a union negotiator agree to. So we stuck approximately $18,500 in that union negotiated reserve line. Once we got those numbers, we talked at one of our meetings, we have moved all of the raises into the appropriate line item per salary. So there appears to be $962 that did not need to be out. Okay. I guess that is, you, the gentleman's side. Elections. Let's talk about elections. Tommy, you're going to have to help. The story goes as follows. We had registrars of voters. The, we have a Republican registrar and a Democrat registrar. Neither of their names were on the ballot. There then became a movement to write names in. The Democratic registrar. Okay. I guess that is. Elections. Let's talk about elections. Tommy, you're going to have to help. The story goes as follows. We had registrars of voters. We have a Republican registrar and a Democrat registrar. Neither of their names were on the ballot. There then became a movement to write names in. The Democratic registrar received 22 or something. I don't have an exact number. The Republican received five. And there was another person. To make the headlines more exciting, a rogue person who had others write their name in and received five votes.
Oh, the Green Party.
The Green Party. Was it a Green Party? So they're not rogue. They're green. Well, I agree. But nevertheless, I do think my rogue is a much more interesting story. But, so we have a tie for the registrar, Republican registrar, the second registrar of voters. There is talk that we should have another election.
It doesn't look that way.
Seems to me we could have three. And what damage would that do?
By, from what I understand is that the President Republican registrar has withdrawn. So by doing, and I'm the deputy registrar. So as she has withdrawn, I go with her because she, I was appointed by her. So technically, there will be a Democratic registrar and a Green Party registrar. But because the Republicans are a major, major party, that most likely that we will be able to nominate someone to be registrar. So probably end up having three registrars.
Which was my suggestion. They're paid hourly. What, it seems a lot, much more cost efficient than having elections. Last election cost us about 2200.
Can I add a comment to that?
Sure.
We're waiting for a ruling by the Secretary of State. It probably would receive on Monday, this past, yesterday. We have not received it yet. So we are waiting for that ruling. But it is a state requirement that there be a Republican and a Democrat registrar of voters for each municipality.
Was that election even considered legal? Because there wasn't, I never knew I had to write in a vote for anyone.
We don't have a ruling on that.
It turns out that when you do a write-in, there's no party opposed to it. So there's no party determination of those people, whoever wins the write-ins.
So the voter doesn't know they're supposed to be writing in the name of someone? Is that even a valid nomination election?
So this was a mistake by the state. As my understanding is, they forgot to just write it on the ballots.
Well, I understand that there was, it was done electronically to the Secretary of State's office. And for some reason, it got dumped.
Correct.
And we're not the only town that had this. There were other people in other positions that had similar problems.
Is that there across the state?
Across the state. This is why I think the Secretary of State is very reserved about coming out with any comments. Because it's their system. They were supposed to report all this and we, you know.
Yeah, we did what we're supposed to, supposed to do. And this is what we end up with.
Yeah, if it had been balloted, there would have been much more than five votes.
And the only, most of the voters had been told when they were giving their name and address, you need to write anything.
See, only people who can't do that. So the only time, the only way you could have found out was to actually stop at one of the tents outside, 75 feet away. Once you walk into the polling area, there's no discussion about that, which is why people didn't know.
Yeah, this is not sensible.
Yeah.
So either way, for conversational, either we'll have another election, which is about $2200, maybe. I think I'll file that. Or we will have three registered voters, which will, and they're paid hourly. I'm actually, we are paying people sit at the booth that polls.
So the budget will not change for registrar voters?
May. If there's another election, we'll have. If they were paying three people instead of two.
You're paying by the hour. So now we have to pay three people instead of two people.
That's the conundrum that Tommy is laying out to you.
Secretary of State's.
It's all my fault. It's only a couple hundred dollars.
Yeah, but we haven't heard from them. I mean.
There's been more funds to be turned into the secretary.
Well, this has been going on.
It's a hell of a way to say it.
Exactly.
Oh, where, where?
That is there.
Because otherwise, you're supposed to have an election three weeks from the prior election.
Really?
It would have to be, it's supposed to be on the November 29th. If they're going to have an election, that's when it would be.
But if the ballots are incorrect, that's not, you know, that's not supposed to happen.
Yeah, but there's no, there has been no determination from the Secretary of State. So we're so much in limbo right now.
So the ballots could be incorrect, but we don't know.
So there is a story that we will follow through.
It happened in Westbrook years ago.
Yeah, interesting.
All right, let's continue down. Assessors' order across seem a little low, but right about where they should be, straight on. The tax collector has an assistant, which she brings in during the summer. So therefore, you see most of the assistant expenses are going there. So I want you to glance at special services. You will see the contingency under special services has been used. We have used that line to carry the cost of, the town celebrated, what, 75 years of being Deep River? And there were events. There was a banner outside. All the costs for that were taken out of this line. It's the logical spot. Again, anyone close anything out? I would go all the way down to insurance and bonds. We pay those insurance fees premiums in July. That is why you see most of that line being expended. Fire collect, we have been put on notice several times that the police vehicle expense is running high. Some, and we've incurred those costs. Some of it will be reimbursed by insurance. So the curiosity is, should we reverse that? Should the insurance come into the expense line, which I'm a little comfortable, which I'm comfortable with, we'll recognize as a revenue. We'll talk more. But we know that that line is being stressed. And once again, I shall point out to you, we budget out of habit that we will pay our constables $30,000 a year in overtime. When we get to revenues, you will see that we have, we have billed $45,000. We have paid our constables $35,000. So all seems good, but that is a reoccurring confusion. Police protection, fire, everything seems fine in fire. The supplemental insurance, we pay as a town in July. That's why that line is low. In municipal library, if you remember, we give them all their book money, my word, in July. That's why that line is exhausted. Redemption of debt. Anyone else have any other? I'm just going down here and seeing things that are potentially interesting. Well, let's talk about park and rec. Park and rec, if you look at maintenance for all facilities, we budgeted 20. They have spent 24. They're over budgeted by 17%, by close to $4,000. Certainly, there will be additional work needed on fields. Angus has to explain to us what that means. I was taken aback by, and it may even be, I don't know. We need additional information. Dwayne, I assume you know nothing about it either.
Is there an offset income with park and rec?
Park and rec, on our revenue sign, we have park and rec income. It is not covering the cost that it should be yet. But we do have income over there. But it is falling short of what we're expecting when we get there. Little subdivision. Let's stare at general government capital. When I reason I say stare at it, this report says we have not spent any capital funds yet. Okay? That's the, we're still spending from prior years, is the answer I get from the finance department. That seems, I don't know. I'm going to stop right there. I don't know what it seems. Seems odd. Anyone have, did we get past, go past anything too quickly? Does anyone wish to bring, ask any questions?
On the parks and rec thing, where maintenance all facilities, is that primarily the park? The cabanas and the?
The Plattewood?
Yeah.
And Debbets?
But wait, I didn't, buck down here.
Yeah, I know, not Debbets. No, I mean Plattewood Park. Wasn't there a lot of work that had to be done there?
Dwayne, do you know that answer? I do not know of anything special done.
They want to refurbish the pavilion and the bathroom is part of their grant, that's part of the grant that we received.
That was part of the grant?
Yes.
But that's part of the grant, which we authorized, but meeting, the town needs some money there. But that is not, I do not believe that's what that line is. I believe this is just normal maintenance. Certainly not the buildings.
Because we have a line for park upgrades that still hasn't been.
We have $10,000 in park upgrades, which has not been spent either.
I think some of the, some of the money there was, the work that was done on the Little League field also.
Wasn't there irrigation or something to that effect?
Yeah, I don't remember that. I don't know the exact work that was done on that, something on the Little League field.
I don't know. I don't remember seeing it going over in prior budgets. So it has to be a recent event that put it over. I don't know. Angus will have to explain that to us.
And the library windows and floors, nothing's been done on that yet?
That's the way I read the report. Same with the, which is critical.
There was work done at the transfer station. They did some work in the back there.
Now, the town crew has been creating that road or something.
Yeah.
And we had $25,000 in there, which is the, we had a bid, or at least they chatted with us that that's, we were going to.
I mean, you can't go and drive back around there with your car.
Not yet. That is the plan.
They definitely have done something back there.
The plan is you will come, I shouldn't say the plan. At least the conceptual plan has been given to me is we're going, you'll drive down the back and then go to different places. And we'll have one of those booths there to begin to identify who is a citizen, who isn't.
It's definitely not a road though.
Not yet, not yet.
It's something.
It's beginning.
Work in progress.
I didn't say the work in progress. All right. Let's go to, let's look at revenues. If you glance at revenues, it seems the taxes, which are the workhorse of our expenditures, are right on budget. That's my terminology. We collect a little bit more than half in July, since we've, we collect taxes, car taxes there. So 42% seems about right. I continue to ask them, they have given tax relief to the elderly. They have given tax relief to the fire department. Why we can't get that number, I asked. They told me they would work on it. I do wish to celebrate property taxes in order. We have budgeted $120,000. We have collected 106, 107 of that already, leaving $13,000 left. And while we'll talk about it as one of those elephants in the room, there are sadly houses that people who cannot pay their taxes that are going up for sale December 13th. So we should have additional back taxes coming in. And you'll see their interest, those who haven't paid their taxes pay interest. So that number is coming in very well too. I bring your attention to building permits. We budgeted, received $50,000 revenue. To date, we've received, what's around, $41,000. There are people still putting additions in their house in Deep River. That is great. And if you go down there to, which one do I look at? When you sell your house, you pay, to pay it's tax. You'll see the conveyance. We budgeted 47, 19, almost $20,000. People are still coming to Deep River. Now, and we should, we should celebrate Tom. We budgeted last year, we budgeted $9,000 so far. We'll give Tom and total credit for this. Tom has donated 13,000, almost 13 and a half thousand dollars already in short-term interest. So it is all due to Tom's ability to play the market.
Well, thank you.
There'll be time to work on that registrar problem. I cannot think of too many other, I haven't highlighted too many other things that are worthy of looking at. Let's just comment on public safety police. We paid out 35. We budgeted 40 because there should be a differential. We have not collected 46, six, but we have billed 46, six. So there is the differential between what we pay and what we collect from contractors, which contributes to our spendable income. What else do I, look at newsletter. Joyce, you could participate in this. We have put out one newsletter this fiscal year, which I received. I see we've paid cost. I didn't stop.
Actually, the second newsletter just came today. So you'll probably get it in your mailbox tomorrow.
Awesome. We're returning the cost, which Angus, as good as all in notice, we would. How about the revenues? Is that, there seems to be a lag on those? Is that you that goes get those? Or how do we get the revenues?
Yeah, I prepare everything and then, well, I prepare some stuff and then Kathy prepares it and then I send it out, so.
But, so the newsletter revenue 15 remains yet to be collected. Anyone wish to attempt to, after they've read all these numbers, attempt to make a summary? It seems to be expenditures are, nothing to be upset about, nothing to be too concerned. Revenues seem to be coming in, but I have nothing to upset us unless anyone wishes to put a flag on the plot. I think we're doing okay. Yes, sir.
Just as a question, do you review quarterly the WTCA budget?
I don't. Oh, this board? No.
You're responsible for all.
They're not responsible. State statute will not. Give you a guarantee that those people won't ask not to do with it. The only time they have to come to the selectmen is they go over their budget. It is approved by the town. I am on the board, so I'll give you a yes. What if you pointed that to me? Yes. And it is, it's a trying adventure. But they generate, if you, if you notice, Tom, shoot there. They're up to what, 400, almost half a million dollars of excess cash.
And that's because of the act of depreciation.
Have they owned it?
It's an enterprise.
That is correct.
It's an enterprise fund, so they can depreciate their rolling stock and the plant and things like that. And that's where the cash comes from, to be able to provide for replacement quickly.
Okay. We certainly budget for capital on their cash budget. So we collect from citizens. Or remember, they get substantial amount of dollars from haulers. Get over half a million, a little bit more than half a million dollars from the haulers. So yes, we do look at it. And to your curiosity, next time we have an annual meeting, I might ask you to show up at that break.
That's okay. I wrote the first two years' budgets for them, so.
Well, you can come in.
Familiar with what you were doing.
Well, that is.
Does it have a public vote?
Was there a public vote on that budget? We're getting laid off.
Yeah, sorry.
To be, to be discussed so far. But yes. And since we have decided that we are not moving forward on our vacancies tonight, we will defer those to a special meeting. We're getting close to the end of our meeting. You will notice that Joyce did place on the agenda proposed.
Calendar.
Date for our meetings in 2023. Nothing new. We remain the fourth Tuesday of the month. The little oddity, which you did put on there, the town meeting date, Monday, the 15th.
Yeah, it's set by ordinance. It's the third Monday.
Oh, it's the third, okay.
Yeah, it's set by ordinance.
All right, it's set by ordinance.
The town, the hearing isn't.
The town, because you left that, okay. And I know we go around with that. I have also noticed that there is a scheduled meeting for December 26th.
Which is a Tuesday.
Which is, well, I wish there wouldn't be a Tuesday. How long have we deferred deciding whether that creeps into our holiday spirit?
I would defer for the Tuesday before Thanksgiving as well.
Don't want you to make sense.
People have to cook for the holiday.
In honor of that, unless anyone has any additional information or if they'd like to discuss. or if they'd like to discuss, I would accept. Anyone wish to adjourn?
Motion.
No, you have to make a motion on the calendar.
Oh, I recommend a motion. Okay. Do I make a motion to board? I accept that we... I recommend, although I shouldn't do it. I recommend we accept Joyce's suggested dates. Do I have a second or first or something? And before we adjourn, I once again...
Do they all move in?
They all agree. I wish once again, and you can hear the tears in my eyes, I am not proposing, I am not emotionally ready. Say goodbye to Bill. But we will.
Goodbye.
I see this emotion. He's not sure. Thank you for everything you've done. Thank you for putting up logical reasons that we...
I would like to say something.
Yes, sir.
I can't say that this is... Every night has been a lot of fun. But I will say that I'm very happy and very proud to serve this board and have served the town of Deep River at the time that I've been here.
How many years?
So I appreciate it. Thank you.
How many years have you been on the board?
13, I see.
13, I think. Thank you.
We will miss you, Bill. You've been a very positive addition.
Well, I'm gonna miss you guys, too.
It's been a great...
Not about to stay out of staying.
You would not be the first Republican who goes away for a while and wants to come back, so keep that in mind.
Will you do me one favor? Keep the fingers out of the tablecloth.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna finger.
So did we vote on accepting the calendar?
We did. Yes, I did. Joyce said we all said yeah. It was unanimous. Okay, motion to adjourn.
That's second.
There you go.
Thank you, everyone.